You can, if you want now.
Right now, excuse me, before we get started, I'd like to take a moment of silence for Mr. and Mrs. Horton, who were killed last spring in their home in Minnesota, three state troopers who were killed two weeks ago in Pennsylvania, and the countless victims of school shootings and other violence across the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call. Cooper?
Here.
Tammy?
Here.
Ian?
Here.
Corey?
Here.
Everybody, please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approve of the agenda.
So.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Ananmas. Reports. Town managers' report.
Thank you, Chair. Dear members of the Town Council, residents of Winterport, I'm pleased to provide the following update on recent activities and important notices affecting our town. Public Works Department has successfully completed this month's scheduled ditching and culvert maintenance projects. Work's been carried out on Lebanon Road, Meadow Road, Baker Road, as well as Recreation Center and the Victoria Grant Center. Additionally, all planned paving for the 2025 has been completed. I appreciate the community's patience and cooperation throughout the construction period, which helps ensure safer and more reliable infrastructure for everybody. In reference to our office here, me as the tax collector, the first round of property tax payments were due in September. Our office has diligently processed incoming payments. Thank the residents for their timely submissions and remind anyone who may have outstanding balances to contact the office with any questions or concerns. Of note, we'll be closed on Monday, October 13th, for Columbus Day, as well as Wednesday, October 16th, for staff training. Appreciate your understanding as we take the time to both observe national holidays and ensure that our staff receives the necessary training to continue providing efficient and effective service. Thank you for your continued support and involvement in our community. Should you have any questions regarding the information displayed, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question. Casey, does the staff training have to be on Thursday, October 16th? Is that something that's online? And the only reason I'm asking the question is because that means that the town office is only open two days.
Yeah, it just happens to be where the training hotel and the training schedule under the staffing levels is. We have to make that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, can I ask, is there a way to like switch days?
No.
Have it be Friday?
No.
Okay.
No.
Committee reports. Anybody from any committees?
Hello, my name's Lily Calvert, and I'm the Chair of the Conservation Commission. Nice to meet you. And so I am, I just have a brief request. We, as you know, we are working on the Lower Oak Point property, and we are looking to get an appraisal for that property. And we have given it, been given a quote for $2,700 for that appraisal. And we have a generous donor in town who's willing to pay $2,400 to pay for that. It's wonderful. So we're looking to use $300 of our reserve funds from the Conservation Commission budget to pay for the remaining funds. And I don't know if you want to say that yes, that's okay now. We have another member of our, we have several of us here today. Go ahead.
I, I request a motion.
Oh, yes. We have a motion.
The two, could you?
I should make the motion.
Right, no, could you repeat?
Yes, the motion would be something like the Conservation Commission.
What, what are you asking for?
I'm asking for $300, $300 from our Conservation Commission reserve to be used for the appraisal at the Lower Oak Point property.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve $300 to give them to the Conservation Committee from their fund for appraisal of the Lower Oak Point property.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Thank you. And.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Four to one. Would you in favor? No, four to one.
Four to two.
Oh, four to two.
Three to two, three to two. I'm not in favor either.
Okay. Three to two.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Did you get questions from public or is that later?
Later.
Thanks.
And then we have Mary Serriman-Row here today, also from our commission. She's going to give an update on one of the grants that we're looking into.
I'm Mary Serriman-Row, a member of the Conservation Commission. I'm part of a group of three that are working on looking at acquisition of 55 Lower Oak Point Road, lots 221 and 219. The pursuit of land acquisition was approved at the August Town Council meeting. Now I'm seeking approval to apply for a grant for land acquisition funds. This is approval to apply for a grant. This grant is part of the Climate Resilience Conservation Fund, which is administered by Maine Coast Heritage Trust. These are federal funds which were allocated through the Inflation Reduction Act. There is no cap on these funds, but the fund managers expect to distribute max of $250,000 per applicant. There's no match required. We can use these funds for due diligence, legal costs, environmental planning, in addition to a place acquisition. These funds' goals are to enhance Maine's climate resilience and reduce climate impacts to coastal communities through permanent conservation of the biodiversity and natural functions of critical waters and to protect key places that contribute to the resilience of natural systems in our communities. This includes intact and older old forests and areas that further connectivity, like you see in the Lower Oak Point property. So we are eligible to apply for this grant. We have to close on the project by April 2027. It's. So the application process, they're quite a budget, a few maps, and some narratives that is due October 22nd. And I have a lot of more information if you have any questions about that before I ask for a motion to approve our applying to this grant. Do you have any questions?
Grant is due on the 22nd?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And you're going to use it to, to purchase that property or?
They would, it would be part of the budget to potentially purchase the property, which of course would still need approval to purchase it. And since it doesn't require matching funds, we could use that grant money if we were to get it as the matching funds for another grant, since some other grants we're looking into require matching funds. So we're also, we've talked into a couple of our fund managers and starting to develop timelines of how we can put a few different grants together.
Okay, so if. So if, if say you didn't get approval to purchase Lower Oak Point and you got this grant, then what happens with the grant?
It probably would go away, but I can ask if clarified.
Because, well, because my concern is, is we're not going to have all the information and we're not going to hit, see what is going to be potentially spent at this point. And so.
What do you mean?
If, if you, if the purchase, if you're going to purchase the property.
Yeah.
We don't know what the grant and what, what, what would be the grant, what would be the, the town's cost. And that's, that's my concern at, at this point. But if, but if you can, if you can use the grant for other things, I think it's great. But, but I don't, I, I, I'm concerned about using it for, you know, putting everything on that at this point.
So I think what I understand from the grant process is that, so it'd be approved by December 15th, but they allow for this longer timeline. So I, I guess there, I don't think you can transfer it to another project, right? If like that 55 Lower Oak Point was sold before we acquired all our funds. But I don't.
I'd just hate to see a grant and then have, have to give it back or.
I would be that too.
Yeah, I mean.
But I think in this process, that's kind of the most, that we have to take as we acquire funds. We're hoping, and this isn't, you know, there's no guarantee in this, but we're hoping as we, if we acquire grants and we build, show, show that we're actually building towards something like we are capable of acquiring these grants, that there's some other possibilities of maybe third parties stepping in, purchasing the land while we acquire grants, but that's not, that's certainly.
So you have other avenues of, of raising money aside from the grant and the town?
I mean, there's potentially. There's, there's a lot of different ways that we're still learning about. I mean, there's private donations. I don't expect a big private donation, but maybe, you know, I don't know if Phil's here really want to step in, but essentially what we are looking at are several large grants that we would put together.
How much is this one grant for?
Max of $250,000.
$250,000.
Well, there's no cap, but.
Right, but that's the max. It could come out of it.
They're expecting that's the max. Yeah, there's only some.
And it has to be used by 27, right?
April 2027, yeah.
April 2027.
I could step in if you'd like.
We can also use these, I don't know if I mentioned, we can also use these funds for due diligence costs and environmental assessment and things like that. So that would help us in, not all grants are able to be used for those sort of things. So fees and things like that, legal fees, so that would help us in any closing costs eventually.
And if I remember right, the cost of the land was a million dollars, right?
Yeah, so it hasn't been appraised.
Right, but I'm saying just the stat and number, the talking was a million.
Yeah.
But for a conservation group to purchase a piece of land like that, we have to pay the appraised value. And that's what some of these grants require.
Right.
And so we don't know what that appraised value is, but it is largely less than the asking price. And it is not our intention at all to have the town pay for any of the property.
This grant particularly allows for 5% over the other.
No question.
Phil, you have a question?
Would this property be removed with actuals?
Yes, it would. If it went to a conservation, it wouldn't.
I believe the, the tax, the taxable, the tax, not the taxable, not, it was about $2,000. Well, the town would own the property, so it wouldn't. No, but that would be what we, was in tax revenue. It would be, it was in the two, two thousand dollars.
Okay.
No, I think that sounds fair, yeah. But this, you know, our pursuit of, looking into this property has already been approved, so this is sort of the same process.
So you're looking for a motion to move forward to approve?
I'm looking for a motion to approve us applying.
Apply, move forward to applying for the grant.
Grant over 22nd deadline.
Which doesn't mark us in the head.
No.
Motion to approve them applying for the grant? For the Conservation Commission to prepare this.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Ananmas. Any other committee reports?
Thank you all, and good evening. I'm reporting for the Waterfront Acquisition Committee. This is our October report. In recognition of the council's concerns about legal fees, the committee revisited the questions we have about the property and asked MMA to respond to general process questions and asked Attorney Patrick Lyons to address specific concerns that have arisen. The answers we receive will influence the work we do and the recommendations that we make to the council. Tonight, we're asking you authorize Attorney Patrick Lyons to conduct a lien and foreclosure review, which is done on all other properties before they're sent to the realtor. So this is an expense associated with all tax-acquired property. If there are any issues with either a lien processing or the foreclosure process, those will have to be resolved. We'd also like to ask you to conduct a legal review of the questions that are now, we are now submitting to you instead of Attorney Lyons, and they were part of your packet. So hope you had a chance to review those. The town has authorized you to utilize funds from overlay to pay for any unanticipated expenses. That was Article 39 at the 2025 Town Meeting. So there are funds available to you. We are particularly concerned, though, about the ongoing use of the buildings and the property by the businesses located there. The town acquired the business buildings December 26th, 2021. A review of the 2022 minutes found no action taken by the council. For almost four years, the businesses have been operating in buildings they do not own. Currently, one building is hadlocked, yet at least one boat owner having a key. Does the town have a key?
I believe so.
There's also a residence that is not part of the tax-acquired property that will need your attention if we move forward with acquiring this tax-acquired property. The council will also need to address the issue of personal property that is currently present on town property, determine what risks are associated with continued occupancy of the households, businesses, and that of other personal property owners, such as those boat owners that have their boats there in the boatyard. We ask for information about the fair market value of R7 Lot 87, which is the property across from Brownfield, and have received information on the potential for sale of this town property for the purchase of property along the Penobscot River, which was a town meeting decision in 2009, Article 40. From the town realtor, if you decide to sell all the parcels as one, they are broken up. I believe we could advertise these to some developers or buildings and stimulate some interest in the 250,000 to 300,000 range. Since Lot 87 is already subdivided, this would be desirable to a builder. Keep in mind, the land is wooded and unimproved, no well, no septic. Is this property, he's asking, is this property in tree growth? I don't believe it is, yeah. But if it were and had a harvest, it would increase the value of the property. Such a sale would go a long way towards meeting, meeting grant application requirements for town matching funds, or just go a long way towards the purchase of the property. We have begun looking at grants that may be available to us. Several are focused on the working waterfront and boating access. We had a remote meeting with Melissa Bridge, who administers the Shore and Harper Planning Grant, which provides funds for planning projects that will provide waterfront access to communities. Funds can be used for conceptual designs, community outreach, as well as infrastructure vulnerability assessments. Grants are up to $50,000. Local match of 10% can include in-kind donations of the committee members' time. So we think we can match that easily. Melissa said our project was very much like one another town received funds for Bodenham, took their Public Works acreage and turned it into waterfront access, and they used the grant for that. She encouraged us to prepare an application and will order the material as soon as it's available. Other waterfront possibilities are the boating facilities fund and land for communities. So we have a number of options that we're looking at. We sent five soils, we sent five soil samples to the University of Maine for environmental contamination assessment. The town will be built, but recognizing that you have not approved that expense, if you will not approve the funds, members of the committee will make a donation to do so. If tests come back with any contamination that needs remediation, the municipal brownfields remedial program may be able to assist with cleanup efforts of petroleum and hazardous substances like lead. The Waldo County's own water conservation district will assist us with interpreting the results of the tests. We will soon have a public opinion survey ready to send residents to determine what uses the property they would most value. We've already heard from Marina owners, a previous waterfront committee member, boat owners, and others about the value such an acquisition holds for them. We heard from members of the community that are concerned about how this acquisition would affect their property taxes. Perhaps the most potent statement, however, was from Melissa Bridge, who said, "These properties are hard to come by. This is an opportunity for the town." We would like the opportunity to develop a cost-benefit analysis that will show you and residents our findings, so informed decisions can be made. And keep in mind, much of the expenses that will be incurred can be deducted from the amount that will be paid by former owners once everything has been accounted for. So it's a net zero for the town. We will have to give clarification on several things from an attorney about what legally by law can actually be deducted. We encourage counselors to periodically review the action plan. An email the committee with any questions. By staying informed as we proceed, you will be better able to make final determination on our recommendations. You can access the action plan, welcome anyone to do that, on the town website, Water Acquisition Committee, and information. Subnehmen, it says submen. So we have been waiting for three months in getting information that would help direct our work, primarily because we've been not able to access a lawyer regarding questions that have to be addressed if we're going to be able to put together a cost-benefit analysis. If we're, if you are not prepared to take action in the form of motions and discussion on those motions tonight, we will be delayed even further. Therefore, we request that tonight at a minimum, you approve an extension, if needed, to complete our work. So I will ask again, as I asked at the July meeting when you appointed the members of the committee, what do you require of us? I got no direction, heard no direction from you at that meeting. All matters you want us to bring for town to the people will be presented as they arrive, but please be specific, so we do not operate under any assumptions of support for the work we're doing. We do, as a committee, this was unanimous, firmly believe the property has the potential to bring to Winterport myriad opportunities that will provide recreational and business benefits to residents, local businesses, and taxpayers. We agree with the premise that formed the committee as articulated on the town website. Quote, "The committee will conduct a six-month review of our 11-245 a tax-acquired property to evaluate its potential to the community. The primary mission of the committee is to determine whether the town should retain the property to provide public waterfront access. Members will also explore possible municipal uses for the sale. Should it remain under town ownership, committee members stand ready to assist you in your public, in your public deliberations and follow through on the issues brought to you tonight. We would like to request a work session with you to answer any questions in higher level detail about what we have learned so far and what information you need. And included in our report, you were some suggested motions. So I'm hoping that you have looked at those and are ready to present some motions for consideration and deliberation. Thank you.
Yeah.
Don't you think we ought to take and talk to the people of town? I listen to so many people, you can't even believe that we got somebody that wants to spend a million dollars on one piece of property. They think they're going to get another million out of another piece of property. When the taxes is so damn high in Winterport, hell, nobody's going to afford them, and I'm watching a lot of people lose their properties. This is ridiculous. It's time that we take and shut them down and say, "No more. We're not going to spend no more money on lawyers or anything else."
Thank you, yeah.
I have a moment to say something. People in the committee and myself included are, we're just trying to figure out what the course of action is, right? We're meeting every Wednesday, we're doing it for free, right? Like, we're not saying that we're going to like shut down. We haven't made a decision. We need information to make a decision, and you guys make the decision. Right?
Right, and that's what you guys are looking at right now, trying, you know, make your decision to present to us on the feasibility. And that's, you know, where we're at right now.
Yeah, but exactly. So I just want to have, understand that there's at this point seven people in the committee who are not only dedicating the times on Wednesdays, but times like, like I think during the week, at least, I would say at this point, I would say at least each of us has put in 80 hours of work for free, so that's not something that anybody's charging.
Right.
So we're just asking for, to be able to get some numbers to do just any economic assessments. That, I understand all of our taxes run up, but in the cost-benefit thing about it, if we can get a little bit of money to get some information, all of us are putting our labor and time for free, just to give everybody just more information.
Right. I'll be honest with you, I'm at the point, I don't want to spend the taxpayers' money right now on this until we decide that if we're going to purchase it and then spend the money for legal and everything else. I don't want to see the money spent until we're sure we're going to purchase it and then do soil tests, do, do everything after it's decided we're going to buy it. But to do it before, I feel we're wasting a lot of money. That's my opinion. Chris?
I don't know if this is the place to do it, but I came in and said, "Oh, Casey", and he was on a phone call, and the term come out, net zero. Well, as I was explaining, it doesn't matter. Well, as I was explaining, doesn't matter if it's coming out of the taxpayer anyways. Well, I'm the taxpayer. It's coming out of my pocket. If I can't have him say him so, it shouldn't be being spent.
Thank you, Chris. Mary Ann?
Well, everyone will have a say. Everyone, you will have to vote.
But you ought to put the cart before the horse.
In order to develop a cost-benefit analysis, we have to have certain information, and that can be deducted if you decide.
That's not true, because my attorney said certain things that the buyers are responsible for and the taxpayers responsible for. I already got the attorney.
Ellie?
I have a question. Sorry. I have a question. Mary Ann was talking about the field across from the bridge back to Drags Strip.
Yeah.
That's not where she took the soil samples, is it?
No, I believe it was a.
It's that side.
Yeah, she was just, yeah. That was different.
And then, I don't, I've done legal work for a lot of years of my life, and I have looked at their abstracts. It's not gonna be a minimum. It's gonna be a big bunch of money.
Yes.
And, I don't know how much we have an overlay. Yes, they did say she could have that, but I don't remember how much we have an overlay, but that could be a really expensive step.
Right.
So you said, and this is just to clarify, we want to make the decision if we're gonna buy it or not, right? So in order.
That's where I feel, you know, after you decide that the townspeople decide, yes, we wanna, you know, we're gonna move forward, then spend the money with lawyer fees, soil tests, but why are we doing this before we're spending money not knowing exactly if this is gonna be accepted by the town to be purchased?
So I think what I'm trying to say is, think of it as if you're gonna buy a house, right? Right? You still have to do some time, go to the house, look at the house, you get, you have a person to come look at it and make an assessment, even if you don't buy it.
Yeah, you make your offer, you like your due diligence period, and then you do that work and that due diligence to say, "Okay, I wanna do a soil test, I wanna inspect the septic system," for example.
So what information do you need that would help you decide if you wanted to buy the property? That, what information is free right now?
You know, you gotta come back and give us the facts and information on what you're getting, what's the reasoning the town should buy it, and then pursue going further. Don't spend the money right now, not knowing if it's gonna get passed to purchase, and we spend the money not gonna purchase it, it's just, it's a waste of taxpayers' money until we're gonna do something.
Mr. Chairman? Can I ask you, Mary Ann, how much of the soil samples that you sent to the University of Maine?
Twenty-five dollars.
It's $25?
Per.
Per, so it's a hundred dollars?
Hundred twenty-five.
Hundred twenty-five. Thank you for your math, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I guess I would like to kind of refocus on what feasibility means. Feasibility means what is required in order for us to purchase this property? So say, let's use the soil test as an example. We get the test back, and there are, there is contamination there. At that point, then, we would need to determine and put in that cost-benefit analysis for remediating that contamination. So we're gonna add up all of these things that need to be considered before we can make a decision about whether it is even feasible to do this. So there is information we need. As I said in the beginning, we're using MMA as much as possible to get clarification on this, but there are some questions, and I think you, I don't know if you're concerned about the fact that, the question of whether some of the boat owners are actually living in the boats. We had heard that one did over winter there in the past. This is your property, this is our property now, and the question of, the legal question, I think you would want to ask the lawyer, and it will have to be Patrick Lyons because of the conflict with.
Rudman?
Yeah. So there are lots of questions I think you would want to get answered regarding the situation right now, the property that the town owns. And that's outside of our scope, we just wanted to present that concern.
Right.
Especially because of the deterioration of some of the buildings. So the feasibility study will cover all of those costs that wouldn't be incurred if we were to purchase it. At that point, the committee will look at that and say, "Well, it doesn't look like it's gonna be very feasible." But if we get donations, and we've had some people saying that they would love to donate to purchase some waterfront properties. So there are many different opinions in the community, and that's why we wanna do the survey, and the Shore and Harbor Planning Grant will allow us, will actually help us do that survey. So there's a lot that goes into it, and we've done a lot, as evidenced by the report I just gave. So all we want to do is be able to complete our work and present to the community and to the council our findings.
Thank you. Yeah.
So she wants to sell the property across from the airport. It's already been brought to town, we even won, and was denied. Two hundred, nine, nine people wanted to sell it, two hundred did not want to sell it. If you remember, anybody that was at that meeting remembers. That's how many people do not want to sell that piece of property. There's a lot of animals and stuff out there, we see get jay-rye out there. Yeah, I kinda like seeing that there, and I don't wanna see a bunch of houses or anything going out there, it's gonna cause a problem with the Drags Strip.
Right.
That's a part I don't like.
All right, let's, does anybody wanna show anything on this?
I just wanna bring up one. The net zero thing I hear about, I understand the whole thing of during a sale, you get all your fees back and all this, but this, to me, is not the same. This is extra that we're doing. I don't feel like you get that same benefit. So I guess I would have to see that, a fax that is legitimate, that makes sense.
And the only one who can really give you that, because it is statute that sets those parameters, is the lawyer. So we'd have to get that information from Patrick, what would be allowable. So tonight, we'd like to entertain at least a motion to allow us to extend the time period, since we have had these delays and don't have that information. Much of the questions that you have, we don't have answers to because they're legal questions.
There are motion to extend the time period for an acquisition committee.
How, can I ask a question? What is your original time for the water?
Six months, you gave us six months, but we're three months behind in terms of really being able to.
When you start, July?
Put things on the paper.
Was it July you started?
Yes. Yeah, well, July you appointed, and it took a few weeks to get the meeting set up, so, yeah. We were looking at maybe a February final report to you. That would be, would have been, the end of January would be the end of the six months, and then it's your February meeting, so.
So you want a three-month.
Looking till May? To extend it till May?
February. Yeah, May. And that would be in time for town meeting too, so that whatever we needed, whatever we recommended, I guess it would be the best way to say it, that you bring to town meeting for town approval, there'd be time for that, if we get this together in May.
Motion.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to extend Waterfront Acquisition Committee till May.
Is there a second?
You should say May 26, right?
May 26. Is there a second? No second, motion fails.
So we will have a report to you in February.
In February.
Will you entertain any of the other motions we presented to you tonight? The lien foreclosure review, which you would have to do anyway, if you were to give it to a realtor, if we get that done?
You can do that for free right online, Waldo County. You do a sign-in and put the tax map and property, anybody can do that.
Has, has, has the property that's gone out for bid already, tax-acquired property, has that been done by anyone?
Yes, that is conducted by our town attorney.
I'm sorry, conducted by who?
The town attorney.
Yes.
So you already have that case, right?
Exactly.
No, every tax-acquired sale that has had to go down has to go through a review by the town attorney, they look at all of our foreclosure notices and lien notices, so this would be, in this situation, conducted by Patrick Lyons rather than Rudman because of the conflict. So this is gonna be something, whether we sell the property or keep the property, that has to happen anyway.
So that's something we should vote on, because we do have to do it regardless. So I make motion that we have that review.
We have a second on the motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
That would be something that we wouldn't get back, from what the net zero I just talked about, that would be, because we gotta do it anyway, that would be something that we'd get back on the other end.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those against? Three to two. Motion passes.
I'm sorry. Is the motion failed?
No.
Passed, three to two, passed.
Pass.
What was the other one? Wondered, Mary Ann, the other motion, it was, do you have one more?
There are several on there, would you like me to ask you for?
We need a work session?
Right. Oh, excellent, yes, a work session. We don't need a motion for that, we would just like to schedule.
Schedule it.
Yeah. Then we can get into more detail.
Yeah.
Some of the concerns that you have.
Okay, we got it scheduled then.
Yeah, oh, there is another motion, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, the soil sample test.
Yeah.
We need to make a motion to approve that.
A hundred and twenty-five dollars for the soil test?
Motion to approve the hundred and twenty-five dollars for the soil test.
We have a second on it?
Oh, come on.
Motion fails.
Oh, pal.
So committee members will make a.
I'll give you fifty bucks.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, is there any other committee reports?
Yes.
Nice.
Sorry. This is quick. We just need a motion to reauthorize the Solid Waste and Recycle Committee. The first motion that actually created, recreated the committee was for one year, and the year went by before we even had our first meeting because we did not have members. So that got lost to you and to us. So at this time, we need a formal motion to, and I'd actually appreciate it if you would make it just a committee of the town, permanent committee of the town, so that we can continue our work.
I make a motion that we allow the Solid Waste Committee to continue for another year.
Guys, stop.
Can you shut up back there, please? Really?
I'm sorry.
I made a motion that we continue the Solid Waste Committee for another year.
Another year? Okay.
What are you asking us?
That it be a permanent committee of the town. There's a lot of work that's being done, and a lot of work that can continue to be done. The food waste diversion project is off and running. We've got some alternative sites where individuals can take things that they can no longer take to the transfer station. We're working again with the state to develop a regional approach to the problems related to solid waste, so there's a lot we're working on. We made presentations to the DEP, we've actually testified to the legislature, and we're successful to some degree. Okay, now, we'd like to continue to work on behalf of the town. Would you be willing to make your motion?
Can I amend it?
No, I don't know what you want to do. We have a motion on the floor right now to authorize solid waste for one year. Do we have a second? Second, we have a second. Do we have any discussion?
Can I amend the motion to, to?
This is for this right now. If this doesn't pass, then you can.
Okay.
So we had a second from Cooper, is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those against? Four to one, motion passes one year for the Solid Waste Committee. We have any other committee reports? Moving forward, chair report, there's nothing to report at this time. Consent agenda.
Make motion, accept the consent agenda is presented.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would recommend pulling out the appointment to the waterfront acquisition committee, just so that you could make the formal motion to appoint those two members. You also have the Board of Appeals that needs two members, they don't have anybody currently putting in for it, didn't know if the council had anybody in mind. The Recreation Board also needs one member, not sure if there's anybody here that would be willing to serve on the Board of Appeals or the Recreation Board.
So you want to consent the agenda, then we'll go back on to this separately?
If you accept the consent agenda, then you just get down to line eight, so you need to pull those from the consent agenda to review them, and then the sections two and three would be approved in the consent agenda, but if you remove section one, then you could have that discussion.
Okay, we're gonna remove section one from the agenda and approve section two and three.
I have a question regarding two.
Yeah.
On the payable warrants, there's quite a few, I shouldn't say quite a few, I'm sorry, I'll take that back, there's been some, some information that, for example, we just have as a description, the numbers that are on there, but it doesn't really say what it is.
Those are the invoice numbers that are attached to the warrant.
Invoice numbers that are attached to the warrant.
You have the invoices attached within that warrant.
Okay.
Just match the invoices.
The invoices that are in the packet?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I needed that clarification, thank you.
Good motion, consent the agenda for number two and three, and hold number one out for discussion. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. We got appointments for waterfront acquisition committee, I believe it's two members now, not one, right? There's two, Mary Ann, right?
Correct. Alan Cohen resigned.
Resigned, right.
And no one from the conservation committee stepped up to take his place.
We have two people that have applied. Cooper?
Make a motion to appoint Stacy Brown, Jared Kisman, to the waterfront acquisition committee.
Okay, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Board of Appeals, two members for the Board of Appeals.
Can I speak to that? So state statute requires that the town council appoint members. So I'm asking you to be a little more aggressive in seeking out individuals who might be willing to serve on the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals' purpose is to give residents of the town an opportunity to be heard on issues related to the land use ordinance and other ordinances that we have. And it's a very important function. It does require training, which is offered by MAA. But it is a service to the town. And a full board would be seven members, so we need two.
Have any discussion on point number, any about a year?
I would put it on like Facebook.
You can advertise on Facebook that it's available.
Can you put it on the board computer or the board down at the corner?
Could, yep, we advertise it over here. So advertise at a few different spots that we have openings. And then we have an opening on the recreation board. If anyone attends tonight and would like to be part of that. If not, we'll do the same with that, let's advertise it on Facebook and on the different boards and let people in town know that those positions are available. Any other discussion on that? Ordinances to consider, winter parking restrictions, ordinance updated from 1991.
Did we do date?
Uh, there is a, some quick lines of discharge.
Okay.
So ordinance is, winter parking restriction, ordinance updated from 1991.
I make a motion to adopt the 1991 winter parking ordinance is edited.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Number 10, agenda items. Appoint RSU 22 Board of Directors. We're going to need two people to be appointed to RSU 22 for a term that will just be for until the next election in June. Cooper?
Make a motion to appoint Catherine Collins and Scott Klishman to the RSU 22 Board of Directors. He told you.
I'll second. The chair.
Yeah.
Mr. Klishman is not eligible because his daughter resident of the town.
Yes, he is resident.
I am a resident. I'm, my three residents, one, two, I'm a resident.
Okay. So I second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? All those against? Remember abstain from it? Three to?
Two abstained.
Two abstained. Two abstained. Three, four. Community Solar, Todd Erickson.
Thank you. Thank you.
Stephen has some.
Yeah, thank you. No.
Thank you.
At the end of this, if any of you don't like what I have to say, my name is Todd Erickson. If any of you, actually, my name is Eric. Todd Erickson is the one I took the initial call on, I had the power. So remember that, if you don't like what I have to say, I'm Todd. No, really, thank you all for being, let me be here tonight. If there's anything I gather from the multitude of town meetings I've been doing is that we all can agree, as many residents said, we're not happy with our taxes and we're not happy with the rates of pay and utility. Anyone disagree with that? I wouldn't think so either. I'm here because of community solar. As you all know, like wind a few years back, solar is now Maine's focus, they're in fast lane with it. They're really trying to achieve this goal by 2050 to be completely reliant on clean renewable energy sources. That's a discussion for another day, whether it's going to happen or not. But what they do to achieve that goal and to ensure the power from the fields that are going up now that stay in our communities is this program. What this program does is allows, in this case, the town of Woodrop and all the utility meters they oversee essentially draw power from that solar field. What you would do is they would look at all your meters, the size, CMP shares that information with the developer. Developer allocates that amount of power to CMP for you. Those solar credits, much like if you had an array on your home on the roof or a standalone ground mount system, would offset your kilowatt an hour usage, leaving just your delivery charge to CMP. Nothing changes with CMP, they still stay utility provider, they still control the rates that you pay. They increase them, as you know. But what does change is those billable kilowatt hours that get carried up every month when they read your meter on both the delivery and on the supply portion of the utility bill gets offset by the, by the developer of the farm you're connected to. Just to make things easy, I always just use this as an example, the salt shed maybe for the highway department. If that meter had $200 with billable kilowatt hours on it, that got taken care of by the solar developer beforehand, before this bill even got sent back to you in the form of the solar credits. Then what happens is 30 days later, the developer, once CMP has let them know that, hey, we've applied your solar credits on there, we sent them our utility bill just with our delivery charge on there, so it takes your overhead, making the grid, paying the guys, line the trucks, transformers, whatever it might be. You can go ahead and invoice them now for the amount of power you covered. In the event where it was 200 bucks, they would just invoice you at 170, saving you 15%. That's the, essentially the offer with state of Maine's community solar program on any meter that's classified small or general service or residential, you'll receive a 15% reduction off of any charges that are connected with your billable kilowatt hours. There's nothing to cost you to enroll. And if, say, different leadership were to come in and you worked for it and you voted to, to enroll, a different leadership came in and they didn't want to enroll, it doesn't cost anything to get out of the program. They just ask for 180 a heads up. So in the event where whatever vacancy you're going to leave on that farm based off the size of all your meters, I need to go out and find someone to replace the vacancy you're going to leave. But there's no cost involved. I say that, but I, like many of you too, probably respect transparency. You've already paid into this program, every single one of you in this room, whether you like solar or not, you paid for it, you paid for it, you all paid for it with your tax dollars that's gone to the Maine Green Energy Fund. And with CMP's increased rates, their rates and some of those funds they get from those increased rates go to these continuing green energy efforts. So the more clean energy they get into their grids, they don't get fined by CMP for not staying in the course, so to speak. If they're not staying in the course, they get fined. So these rate increases are to ensure that these clean energy efforts are still being honored. And in case they're not, if they are fined for not having X amount of clean energy come into their grid, they get fined. What do you think they're doing? They're rolling it right back to you guys, so. This is a way where you've already paid into this, this program. I have found a way to get some of that money back in your pockets. Does anyone have any questions about the program at all?
How long has this program, I'm sorry. How long has this program been around?
So it'll be seven years in January with the state of Maine, but nationwide about 13, 14 years. Massachusetts, New York, Maine, the kind of the pioneers, if you will, where it started and originated. And now I think it's 33 states that are doing it, 50.
And how many, how many, do all, is it within all the counties so far?
I'm sorry.
Is, are all the counties using it so far?
Well, they, so when it first came out, it was only available to residential homeowners. And then as more residential homeowners that were signing on, A, it was taking forever to fill these farms because a meter size of the home obviously versus a school district or municipality is much smaller. Then, then a lot of these people were business owners, so it went to them. The municipality opportunity only came out about 18 months ago. But since then, almost every municipality and every school that I have personally been to, two in all hands. I think two. So bigger school district being the largest. The only reason there's not more on it now is literally because it just wasn't an option. The developers on their end didn't want such massive entities taking up a majority of the, of the, you know, real estate on their solar farms. In the event where if something changed and they needed to opt out of the program, they weren't left with this massive vacancy on this farm that would have been more difficult to fill. Now, terms have changed, state saying absolutely not, we want municipalities, we want school districts, so.
So, so if we were to sign on, on this program, what would be the next steps?
The next steps would be, it's really just simple, actually, half of the steps already been done. It would be providing the, your most recent utility information, your utility. I've already been given that and that's how I was able to put together this savings analysis. And then it would be just a simple application. What that application does is two things. One, it gives, gives us permission on behalf of you and a developer to essentially logistically complete the enrollment process for you. And all that means is be let the developer ask CMP if you've been paying your bills. The second thing is, it gives CMP permission to share your meter information with that developer so they know how many kilowatt hours to allocate on your behalf. And what that does is when those kilowatt hours go on to your utility bill, that offsets literally what would be billed to you. So in essence, you're allowing an entity to gain access to your utility bill to offset your costs.
So, so where is the solar power coming from?
That's a very good question. It all depends on the size of your, your overall meter. Once you enroll in those meter, I mean, those CMP bills are, are shared with the developer, what they're going to do is based off what's called your size, and that's all of your collective meters added up. Then they look around at which development is A, closest to completion, and B, has a vacancy left from subscriptions to even bring you on. So I don't know exactly which one you'd be attached to, but once you enroll, within a few weeks, I know that answer.
So you're talking about, when you, when you say the size, then you mean you would have to look collectively at everybody in Woodrop that has signed up for it, or signed on for it?
No, ma'am, it would just be just the meters you will oversee today is what I'm here for. Just the, just the towns' meters.
Okay.
All the residents can on their behalf, of course, that anyone, they can definitely enroll their homes or or their businesses, of course.
But this is just about the, this is just about the town itself?
Correct.
And what they.
Yeah, specifically the five meters you oversee. All the, all the farms, I will tell you, are local. And they're in close proximity to the grid that's feeding you power now. It's just, power's being fed to use from fossil fuels. Maine's really wanting you to go solar. So essentially what you're doing is just allowing CMP to change the source of the power. Because they're doing that, it offsets your costs. All the fields are local, this isn't power purchased somewhere else and just, you're getting credits for that somewhere else. It's power that's made, generated, built in this state that did generate jobs. And then that power is being dispersed amongst constituents of Maine. That prevents developers from selling it out because in order for the developers to can then essentially see their projects and fruition and be completed, some of that takes some grant money too. I'll give you an example. Developers don't own the substations, and a lot of these substations, the grants need to be upgraded to take in this power from the solar farms. Developers are like, well, that's not my property, that's CMP's property. CMP says, well, I wouldn't have updates if you didn't put this giant farm in here and take the power. So what they do, they both go to the state and the state says, here you go. But before you get this grant money, we want to show, you want, we want you to show us that you've allowed our taxpayers to subscribe to this farm where they can take advantage of the benefits of the kilowatt hour reduction that the solar farms provide.
Corey?
So what if there's a town, we say we're going to use 300 kilowatt hours, and we end up using 400? Is there a penalty for over?
No. In the event, and that's actually quite common in the very early stages of the program because as they size you, they don't know if you didn't add addition to the town hall or swap out what was your heating out, probably maybe say heat pumps or something. Or, or they didn't just size you exactly correct in the very beginning. In your case too, you're enrolling, if you do enroll, we're going right into winter where we just have less solar, you know, production. The sun still works, contrary to what a lot of people believe in hazy, cloudy, snowy days. They just don't work in the peak performance as they would in, say, dead of August. So there's always going to, not always, but in the early stages, there's going to be months where you might use more power than what the solar panels produce. In that case, if you had 600 billable kilowatt hours, the panels produce 500. Whatever that 500 came out to be monetarily based off CMP's current rates is what you'd receive your 15% discount on. That 100 difference would just be carried up and accepted CMP's rates as they normally are now. It would just be completely, you know, quite a bit offset by the production of panels. They're just not completely over. Now, when you go into the full lunar cycle, they call it, where in the summertime, they intentionally size you to where your months, they try to match your months where you're using your most, but then the months where you're using your least, the panel allocation doesn't change. What they do is they intentionally want you to generate more credits, more power from the panels. So then when you come back into next winter and you do have months where you use more energy than the panels have, have produced or can allocate, you have what's called a banked allocation from those months where you generated more credits than what you actually needed. So then they carry over and they cover any difference. But in the early stages, that would just be carried up to CMP's regular rates and charges.
And with that being said, there'd be just that one delivery charge?
Once you've gone through a full lunar cycle and once they got you sized right where now your complete kilowatt hours are being offset, yes, your bills would be just a delivery charge from CMP going forward. And whatever kilo, billable kilowatt hours that was covered, it'd be invoiced back at 85%.
So there's 15% that, that you're going to get. If we get, say, 75% of the people in Maine side, they want to do that. So then we're just going to pay on the other end.
Everything has to be directed.
It sounds over, right? Because that money's coming out of the, the, the program that we have in Augusta that we're all paying into England. I already have, I already have this program on two of my businesses already. And you know the reason why I have it, because I'm not stupid. You want to get 15% off, I'll, I'll take it and thank all you people here because you're all paying in, which I disagree. But I don't want to have this, this is, and, you know, it's, I worry about when, when everybody gets out of this. So we're just going to pay to the other end. So we're going to have all these ugly solar fields out of the state that is doing us absolutely no good. And maybe we ought to build another nuclear plant in the other state. A lot cheaper.
A lot of people feel the same way, just so you know. And a lot of business owners and residential homeowners do just make the decision on this. It's sometimes that just makes sense. And you, where, you know, your concern is that you're going to continue to pay for this, well, you already. So rather than paying for it and not getting anything back, at least in this case, you're getting something back. You're getting in tune of 15%. So to break down your bills, you're, you're, what you pay more in your rate increase. To really do it honestly, you'd have to know how that rate increase got allocated and how they spent that. 1%, maybe 4% of that rate increase might have gone into the energy efforts. Does that 4% of your three or four or $500, you know, small commercial bill factor more than what your savings now on the program? Probably not. It is proof in fact that, yes, they are increasing rates, and yes, some of those efforts are going towards clean energy efforts. So yes, you have been charged more to, to allow programs like this to exist. But what we have found and what this program is doing is putting some of that back to you. Where I've been a taxpayer since my paper wrote at the age of 16. And I don't know too many Maine state programs that don't allow money put back in your pocket. It's usually a creative way to increase our taxes or our costs and the things that go to efforts. Sometimes we don't even want them to do, but it's just depends on losing legislation at the time. But it really is just, they're not going to build a solar field because you enrolled in it. You're subscribing to one that's already there. So if you don't like the fact.
Excuse me, Todd, Todd, can you dress us, please?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you don't like the fact that it's there. Yeah, so if you don't like the fact that it's there, um, uh, at least take advantage of the benefits of that being there for you, and if it's just monetarily, then it's monetarily.
Hmm.
Some of the numbers, just as you all have, have in front of you on page eight, um, and, and again, you being the business owner, what you probably looked at was just what the bottom line would be. Uh, just skip right to the, the line where it says your total estimated savings high. As you know, CMP has to disclose any rate increases that they're going to do in the FDC, so we know that ahead of time. So what we've done, we've put that into our calculations for you, so if CMP continues to increase their rates as they do, um, year one, you can expect to save two thousand sixty-two dollars based off of your annual spend. Uh, just fast forward to twenty years of the life of the program, which is the life expectancy of the panels and the farm you've been striving to, you're gonna be, uh, almost just a hair under four thousand dollars. Totally, over the twenty years of the program, fifty-eight thousand two hundred and two dollars that the town of Winterport would save simply just by enrolling in this previous program.
Anybody have any questions, Juan?
I have a question. Um, I have credits, so you have some energy bank and credits, so for the funding, uh, is there a deadline on that? Because a lot of the home programs, there is a deadline on that. It's one month, and that's it.
Oh, yes, and I, we don't work with any developers that the credits expire. Uh, in the beginning of this program, there was a particular developer, their name was Arcadia. Um, what they did was, when you generated credits, you paid for those credits at the eighty-five percent rate of whatever the rate was that you would have paid fully to CMP at the time. So if your all-in rate with CMP was twenty-four cents, they charged you twenty cents, but you paid for every credit that generated from the panels they allocated to you. The problem with that was, as you generated more credits than what you used that month, you were paying a bit more for your utility bill than what you would have even paid if you were on the program, but then when it came around in the wintertime, where that particular, you know, like, formula would work to where then it would offset, where they didn't generate more credits, but you had to pay credits, that would offset, but they allowed them to expire after a year, so essentially there was potential where you would have paid for credits, but then they would expire and you didn't use them. That, that developer hasn't been part of the program for a long, long time, and the three developers that we worked with, Ambion Power Market and Perch, the two, the three largest in this state, um, that's. In fact, the state's lost that quite a long while ago. And if you still aren't a program and that's happening, I would be happy to help you.
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Any members on board have any other questions, Juan? Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Moving on, Community Orchard.
Thank you.
Radical Roots Nursery. Okay. Fernal Field Bid.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to just speak briefly to, um, this agenda item, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you. I am just speaking as myself, not associated with anything. Um, and my concern, and what I want people listening and the community to understand is the lease as written makes trespassers out of the residents of Winterport who own this property. Um, fourteen hours a day, seven days a week, fifty-two weeks out of the year, for three years, they will not have access to their property. The exclusive possession clause in the lease gives all a fernal field to whoever is awarded the bid. So that means no more walking dogs, no more teaching your kids to drive, no more helping your kids learn to ride a bicycle, or fly your airplanes, or drones. The residents will have no access for their use to this committee, I mean, to, to this property for three, for three years. So from my perspective, what you've done, and it seems a little devious to me, is you're selling the rights of the people to their property. You're not selling the property, you can't do that, only the town can do that, but in this lease, you're actually selling the rights of the people to use your property. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mary Ann. I have a motion to put Fernal Field up to bid.
Um, can we have a, um, discussion first?
Sure.
Um, the public big bid notice, I know it says that, um, it's until October thirtieth. Can we do it in a shorter period of time, like ten days?
That's what, three weeks from right now, right?
Yeah. Plus, the other thing I was going to mention, too, um, is that I know it says to be discussed at the council meeting on November fourth, but we need to vote on not meeting on November fourth because it's election day. So I'd like to make a motion that we change the public bid notice and say the bids will remain open for ten days.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just curious why?
Because I don't think we need thirty days.
You don't need thirty days?
I, I mean, my opinion is that I don't think we need thirty days.
Any other discussion?
Will it hurt to leave it for the thirty days, for the additional days? We might get more offers, or?
That's right.
Well, I don't know how many people are gonna be making an offer, but I think you would know within, within the ten days if we would have an offer or not from, from somebody else.
Any other discussion? You seconded it, right, Tammy? All those in favor to go with the ten-day bid? Two? All those against the ten-day? If he fails, three, two?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, what about, um, uh, on November fourth, which is election day? We normally don't meet because of staffing, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
Uh, I would like to, first of all, cancel the town council meeting for November fourth, whether we move it or not, you know, or just cancel outright, you know, whatever, but, but we need to change that meeting from the fourth.
Change it to the following week?
Change it to the following day, if you want.
Or the following day, even, yeah.
Whatever everybody wants to do, we can cancel the following day, following week, whatever.
Following day.
So you're looking for the?
Till November fifth. Should I, should I restate that?
Yeah, you should restate it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we change the town council meeting from November fourth to November fifth due to election day.
Second. Any discussion? Cooper? Oh, all those in favor? Unanimous. I know. All right, so now we're back to where we were on the Fernal Field Bid. We have a motion to put it up to bid as presented, or does anybody want anything changed?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to put the Fernal Field Bid out as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, um, the, uh, I can't find it. Um, I'm a little concerned with the, with the, um, the whole thing being rented, um, or leased. Um, it, I don't understand why it need, why, why can't it just be the way it was as far as the, the property? Why does it have to be the whole, the whole entire thing?
I think that's how we discussed it when we were going over, and for the amount of money that was being paid for the lease on this, that the town, we did that.
And there's also, ma'am, and there's also part of that area, too, that really isn't feasible to, to utilize?
Yes, yeah, that upper end, yes, for sure, yeah. I'm, I'm just a little concerned, but I have enough of those.
So you have a motion, it was seconded, is there any other discussion on it? All those in favor? All those against?
Mine was actually in favor.
You're in favor? Okay, unanimous on Fernal Field going up to bid. Financial reports for nonprofit policy update, I believe that was updated, new policy for the nonprofits.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
We did talk about the funding for this particular thing for, um, nonprofits that are under ten thousand dollars, that we didn't need all of the information that, uh, was presented before. So I think it needs to be, um, overhauled a little bit, so that we're not asking small, uh, nonprofits to go through hoops to, uh, ask their financials and such. Um, there's also something in here that said that we need to see their cash on hand, and I, I think it's going a little.
Going overboard on that.
Yep, that. So I would like to see this saying that financial reports for funding for new nonprofits or nonprofits over ten thousand dollars, and to revise, and I don't mind doing the revisions if you wanted to, but, but I think that's, uh, more towards what this was our goal towards. Um, you know, they also, on here, it says that, you know, we need to look at their staffing reports. Do we really need to know about staffing for nonprofits? I don't think so. Um, but I think this needs a little bit more attention by us.
Do you wanna work at that and do some edits on it?
Yes, please.
And bring it back?
And, uh, can we work on this on our ordinance in our next ordinance meeting?
Yeah. Workshop and work on it.
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion on financial reports for nonprofit?
So that we can table that.
We're gonna table it and, and.
And work on it in the next ordinance meeting.
Bill for brush chipping at the transfer station invoice eleven sixty. Would you like to give us an explanation on this? You explain everything out?
Uh, I can't yet. The, um, brush pile was chipped by a local contractor. Uh, the bill came in higher than expected, which was originally provided by a verbal quote, uh, and the council has denied the warrant.
What was the verbal quote?
Uh, we budgeted, uh, four thousand dollars.
Why did it come in at fifty-three? What was the reason?
Additional time and some, uh, damage done to the equipment.
Damage done. The trucking company's got credit. Through whose fault?
Cost of doing business.
I mean, if, if that was, I mean, I don't think we should be responsible for their payment.
No. What was it, a flat-rate job quote, or an hourly quote, or?
Yeah, just a flat rate.
Do we have all of this information to pay him? Insurance, W four?
Uh, I'm, I can double check on that, I'm not entirely sure. He's been a local contractor here before, I can, I can check on that.
Can I ask a question about, it says that the wood had trash? How did you not notice? I mean, if you're chipping wood, don't you, like, think I can put it into the?
No, he's using mechanical pole blow, the pole blower.
But even so, wouldn't, wouldn't you see that?
If it was in a brush pile and you grabbed the bucket, probably might see some of it, but you're not gonna see everything. I guess to go back to what you said, we, we can't release payment unless there's a W four insurance on file, you know, just to clarify that.
Right.
She didn't have a W nine?
But, excuse me?
There's no, the W nine? There's no W nine?
Uh, they, they asked whether or not all the stuff was on file with the town as a.
Filled out as a vendor, insurance, and W four on.
Oh, okay.
To make sure he set up on the better list.
I don't believe there's a written policy that says it, but that's standard procedure for us, is that we have to have insurance. This is not coming to my recall, but, yeah.
I have a question. The ordinance or the rules and regulations say all loads are to be inspected, so there shouldn't be any names, or any material in there, um, so they're not getting inspected if this is occurring?
Well, it's like anything, those guys at the dump can, can't be everywhere at once, you know, they've got a bunch of people on the weekend, this guy's, you know, and you can't expect that, and the person has stuff, you know, oh, it looks like brush, well, it's bound to have.
The ordinance are higher than you need to enforce the ordinance. Now that brings in their taxes.
We'll just come up with a different solution and then we'll work, so. Well, what we need to do is we need to decide on this invoice, what we're gonna do. We have four thousand dollars to spend in our account, and we got an invoice for fifty-three hundred, thirteen hundred dollars over.
Mr. Chair, uh, this isn't the, I just wanna point out, this isn't the first time that we've run a line over, uh, it's quite common that things pop up during the year that cost more than anticipated. The council in the past has moved money within that department to cover the expense, that's just common practice. Um, just trying to lay out all, all of your options for the council. You also have, uh, your contingency account that you could utilize if you, if you wished. You also have, uh, the town's warrant article stated that the use of overlay can be used for any unanticipated expenses. And then there's also a warrant article that says that you can straight up run, uh, into a deficit, and we can pull that out of the general fund. Um, that's typically for catastrophic emergencies, in my opinion, uh, but I don't, my own opinion as treasurer is that the thirteen hundred dollars isn't gonna run the department dry by any stretch of the imagination, um, but that, uh, would just be my opinion. Um, so I, I might, what I think the council's done in the past is just move money from a line that has a surplus at the end of the year into this line to cover the cost.
Well, what's gonna happen if we just pay him the four thousand dollars that he quoted us and move on that way? He quoted us one thing?
Well, if we get charged for damage to a thing, that's like, that doesn't make sense, that's like knee-hauling, a low gravel, and blowing a tire.
Exactly, you blow a tire.
That doesn't even make sense, so that's.
You're bound to have wear and tear on.
This part of new business, so I don't really agree with that.
Right, unless it was stated in contract or what have you.
But there wasn't a contract here, there's nothing stated on any repairs, any damage.
Where'd we get the original four thousand from? Was it a quote from somebody?
Verb, yeah, it was a verbal estimate.
A verbal quote? Why would we take a verbal quote?
Because it didn't reach the threshold at the time for what we would have a contract.
I don't make the dollars worth of work down here. I give a quote, that's what I get paid.
Sure.
That's the way it goes. Win some, lose some.
It's wishes of the board. There was a four thousand dollar hard dollar quote, then I'll make a motion that that's what we pay him.
I second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of paying the four thousand dollars? Unanimous, if you pay the four thousand. Funds for the activities directly related to the senior citizens group. This is where they requested their funds. They're looking for us to make a motion to release the funds, it seems to be what they were. What they were appointed or approved at, at the town meeting, I believe it was $2,600.
I made a motion that we release the funds to senior citizens group for the W4 fund activities?
Yes.
In the amount that was approved at the town, W4 town meeting.
I second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
May I ask a question? I'm Vivian, I'm with the W4 senior group. And I was wondering what we would need to do next year for us to get back to maybe being under Article 28 versus what it was? So we can get the funds in a timely way next time, do we need to do something different? Or is that going to be in the policy that you're doing up for the nonprofit?
I don't think you really have to do anything, I think this is just that we changed some of the board and all that, that's all.
Any idea, Casey, when we might be able to come and pick up to check the $2,600 by any chance?
It'll be, it'll be completed in the next week's accounts payable, which is done on Tuesday, but it cannot be released until the board signs off on the warrant.
Okay, and that would be?
Typically Tuesday evening, so Wednesday probably, if they have three signatures on the warrant.
Okay, so.
Next Wednesday.
Next week, next Wednesday, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Public forum for items that are not on the agenda.
Evening, my name is Phil Catula, I live in the Stone Street, Winterport, Maine. My wife Kim and I have lived in the town of W4 for 43-plus years. Glad to fall to W4 our home. I've got a lot of concerns about what's been going on, especially with property taxes in the past few years, but really since I left office. I'll tell you that our property taxes on our home have done up 88.7% since 2019. That's outlandish. You know, I would love to be able to stay in W4 for however many years God gives us. But with rates like that, and when you're on a fixed income, makes it extremely hard for everyone. There was a time that this town and the select board and the council used to think about the people in town and what we can afford. Not what people want, but what you can afford, what you can pay for and still be here. Those times seem to have gone by the words. Big question for me is for the members of this board that were on during last budget cycle. Why money wasn't used from the general fund to offset property taxes? That's been a practice in the town of W4 since forever, since when I was a selectman, before I was a selectman, and all the time I was town manager here. Our general fund is quite healthy. We've never had a cash flow problem in this town since we've gone to a fiscal year budget. You had the opportunity to use $200,000 from the general fund, as we have in the past, this past year, and you did not do it. I guess I'd like to know why, because $200,000 is approximately two mils for the town. So right now, we're paying what, 16%? A 16% mil rate, that would've been reduced to 14 for everyone. Now, I'm sure I'm not the only one that's seen their taxes go up, I would hope not. But I just would like to hear from the councilors that were on the budget process, why money from the general fund was not used.
Recommended by Casey that, I'm not, I can't remember where he got his recommendation from one of his MMA classes or something, that we don't do it.
Why?
I don't remember the logistics, so maybe you can explain.
The main municipal association is advising towns to not use money from the general fund as a best practice anymore. Because it's not a true reflection as to how much the budget costs. And also, the discussion as the councilors here in the budget committee with, the school has exponentially increased. And we're trying to maintain a healthy fund balance as well. So that would be the reasoning as to why they did not recommend it, I can't speak for them, they didn't recommend it, neither did the budget committee last year.
Well, I don't remember electing MMA as a representative, you know, in this town, W4. MMA is a great, you know, place to go to for information and everything, but it doesn't necessarily govern what you should choose to do. That money in the general fund is raised by property taxes, excise taxes, overlay, things that, things that come in over the course of time. That's what builds up that fund. That fund has always been healthy. MMA, reason they would suggest that to town is because there were a lot of towns that used up their surplus. Which is not real, but used up their general fund and put everyone in a hot water. So that's something to take into consideration, and I hope you think about that in this next budget cycle when you go to it. Because if you continue going on the course you are, you know, good luck at the next election.
Tammy?
There was also the issue with the school, that is, keeps going up exponentially, that's school budget, but just hear me out. And they had that big fund balance, and that came home to loose here this year. And it's gonna hit again in the following year, because what they did, instead of giving the taxpayers back that money for each town, they used it to offset the cost, am I saying that right, Casey? They used it to offset the cost to the towns. And by using it to, and they used like $2 million, and then they withdrew to 1 million. And next year, they're gonna, they're gonna, it's gonna be reduced even more, so because of that fund balance issue, the budget's gonna go up even higher. Plus, you have the county budget, which has also gone up. The W4 budget did not make the taxes go up as much as these other things. The W4 by comparison was, was small, it's these other, the school having all that, putting, putting the $2 million in the year before against our balance. And then taking it back to 1 million, and then next year, they're gonna take it back even further because of the, because they have to use up that fund balance. So it's going to, it's going to raise the taxes, and that's what's hitting the hardest.
They only raise the taxes if the town does nothing to try to offset it. And that's where we have always, in the past, we used to work within our means. When money was available, that's what we would use. If the school budget was coming in higher than we liked, I was up there fighting against that. Some of the councilors at the time would go up and fight against it. It's up to our elected officials, you know, on RSU 22, you know, to fight against that. But inevitably, you know, the school budget always seems to go through. Same thing with the county, county, we don't have much say in and everything, but we do have a representative that has been from W4. Sam Butler used to be our representative on the county budget committee. I don't know if you still do or not, you know, but we should.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, good, you know, and so, yes, those do have an effect on our property taxes. But we would take that into consideration when we were doing our budget for that, for that year. And one thing we definitely wouldn't do was to remove income that could possibly be used to help reduce those taxes. You know, so right then and there, Tammy, on any, everyone's bill, you know, it's about, you know, like I'll use my bill as an example. If you would've used $200,000 from the general fund, I would've seen a reduction of about $567 a year. It wouldn't have hurt you that you still had the budget that you were looking for and needed. But it would've helped all the individuals that are paying salaries, that are paying your salary to represent us. So I, I'm just asking you, the next budget cycle, you really take that into consideration? Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
John, Phil.
I'm kind of in an awkward position here, I guess. I'm on the assessing board, and I was on the budget committee. And the idea of bringing, using some of our funds, we were told by Casey from MMA that they did not want us to use any surplus funds. But in our assessing, when we signed the commitment, we were all gonna go home and change our numbers to unlisted, but we didn't. But we were told that it's $425,000 to make a mil now. So if what Phil is saying, if we'd used 200, it would've dropped our taxes a half of a mil. So I guess I'm gonna need some clarification in my next assessing board meeting on what a mil really is in the town of W4, unless somebody can answer that for me. We were told by Travis that it was $425,000 was a mil.
I was using information that I had when I was town manager as to what a mil was for the town.
For back then.
Right, yeah, so, you know, so I don't know, you have to, the assessors.
I still have a question.
I didn't save $5, I'm happy to save $250.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Chris?
I'd like to touch on a little thing that Phil mentioned. A lot of the stuff the town needs should be considered, but the town wishes, we can all wish, we all have a wish list, every one of us. And to invest a couple million dollars in real estate and put that on your tax rolls, and then you take off $30,000 a year in tax revenues that's coming from the property taxes for those properties, and yet, we're all expected to throw that, throw the towel and say, let's do it.
Thank you. Jill?
So last month when I was here, I asked about paperwork that I asked for in June 16th from the town manager to get to me. To this day, I still haven't got that paperwork. And I think that's ridiculous. So the other thing that I'd like to do is thank the board for not redoing this contract. The only thing that I disagree with what you guys did, you should get your keys from him and release it.
See, that's inappropriate.
That is way inappropriate even to stop. How did you hear that? How did he hear that?
It's all around town, I'd hear it, Casey's gonna laugh at a dozen people, gone around everywhere.
Can we stop? Let's end this, please.
It's inappropriate to be laughing.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
My name's William Schabels, I'm the president of the W4 Fire and Rescue Association. Here for the monthly update. Dear W4 Town Council, may I please provide our monthly progress update for the month of September? Our team has had another active and productive month responding to a total of 46 calls. While this represents a modest decrease from 54 calls during the same month last year, our overall call volume for the year remains strong. To date, we responded to 452 calls, which is 103 more than this, at this point last year. This upward trend continues to reflect both the increasing demand for emergency medical services in our community and the dedication of our staff in providing timely, professional care to those in need. Of the 46 calls received in September, 21 were billable. These include 11 for Medicare, six Main Care, two commercial payers, and two self pays. With the remaining calls classified as non-billable or community assistance. This balanced distribution highlights the wide range of individuals we serve in diverse medical and transport needs within our town. It also underscores the vital role W4 ambulance plays in ensuring that all residents, regardless of payer type, receive the emergency care and support they require. We remain proud to the continued progress of our service has made, I'm sorry. We remain proud of the continued progress our service has made and deeply appreciate all the professionalism, compassion, and commitment demonstrated by our providers each day. This dedication allows us to uphold the highest standards of patient care and maintain a dependable, community-centered service. I sincerely thank the council for its time, partnership, and ongoing support as we continue our shared mission of serving the town of W4.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
Yes.
This is, these are very nice reports, and we appreciate those. But what I would like to know is when are we going to get an accounts receivable? So we can see a true accounts receivable from your billing company that gives us the amount of Main Care, Medicare, insurance, self pays, and all that.
I believe I've sent every.
We have never received one, and we're supposed to, and I would like to see that. And I'm, we've been asking for two years now, and I would really like to see an accounts receivable. So we can see what, what our people owe.
Has Casey given, is that being turned to Casey, the chief?
I've given everything that they've given you guys.
He's given, we have never seen an accounts receivable what I'm asking for.
Okay, I'm not.
And I, we can't, we can't, we can't see the people on there because of HIPAA, obviously, but I, I know, because I did this over 20 years.
It's the balance that's owed you for money.
That there are balances you, they bill behind, and the only accounts receivable we ever saw was that there's Brooks and some other person. That's impossible. I, I.
So we use a billing agency that takes care of all of that?
We don't.
Correct, but you, they are your reports, you call them and you say, I want an accounts receivable. And on the back of that accounts receivable, there is a, there is a 20, and make sure that you asked for this, make sure that that's what you get. Is that you need 26, 30, 60, 90 days and more outstanding. And what we would like to see is what you, you guys have coming into you. And your billing service, they have to have those reports. We don't need to see the names, and we can't see the names, but there should be one page that breaks it down. So that we can see how much do you, are you guys owed, and are your billing people doing what they're supposed to be doing? I mean, this is for you too.
Right.
I mean, to ask so that we can see that you're collecting what you can, but this is best practice for your service, so that you can make sure you're getting what you're supposed to get. So if you do that, we appreciate it.
Next one?
Our next meeting, if you could submit.
Thank you.
Anyone else under a public comment? Well, there's one thing I think I need to address, and it's on the town charter that's coming up. We are not gonna be able to have that on the ballot in November for the townspeople to vote on. Everything, the ball's been dropped, we've got nothing done in time. And legally, we cannot have that for November. So right now, it would be on the ballot for in June to blow. I've reached out to Redmond and Winchell and clarified everything with Tim Pease, talked with him, and this is what he has advised us. And I passed it out to everybody else on the board, what to do. So I just wanted to address that with everybody.
Could you send a copy of that to Sean Kearns, please?
Yeah.
Even though the commission, the charter commission is, you know, disbanded.
Right.
Obviously, that is something that would be of interest to all the members on the commission.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, it was, it was pretty much, it's the town council, we didn't jump on it in time. Didn't get it approved, the vote isn't submitted to the town clerk to blow. We should've been more on the ball at the September meeting instead of right now. There's not enough time to act right now and be able to cover everything.
I think it should be in June anyways, because that's when your people show up that are interested in the town business.
Exactly, and next year is a.
In November, you get all these people coming in to go on something else, and they're uneducated on this.
Right, we might have a better turnout in, in June. Yep. Tammy?
We're going to be making, do we have these available now?
What's that?
The charter? The limits? Are those?
The final report was submitted.
The final was 12.
Yes, but I mean, do, in.
That has everything.
And the public can get it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I just want to mention.
So will it be put in the annual report like the interim, the interim report was? Will you print it in the annual report so people have it and read it? Will it be in an article in June? That's what she's asking.
No, no, no.
You want to know if the new town charter is going to be printed in with the town report?
In the town report.
I guess.
Do you think it should be?
It probably should be, it'd be the best thing, but to get out to the people that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Council town manager responds to public comments. You had no executive session? Motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment.
Oh. Unanimous. All in favor? Unanimous.
Yes. I will. I will just.